Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting for City Council for Tuesday, July 11, 2023. Will the Clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger. Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. During your moment of silence, I ask that you keep Albert Berlikowski, the past State Commander of the Disabled Veterans resident of Westwood, in your thoughts. He passed away last night. So Albert Berlikowski, if you know, did a tremendous amount of work in the state of Pennsylvania and across the country for disabled veterans. So our thoughts are with Albert and his family.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Madam President.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. And our next order of business is proclamations, and we have none to be presented, and we have none to be read into the record. So our next order of business is public comment. Thank you. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. When you are called to speak, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
I'm Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Souver, and also Hong Kong, Chong Wai. Global Intelligence Society, U.S., candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. Vote by voter verification for whom an uncensored freedom of speech and public comment across country, including here, is key. 29 March 2016, profanity was permitted, right, Councilor Kraus? You should remember that. You allowed that. You allowed that to be directed at a citizen from another citizen. So that's a contradiction. A concern of Pittsburgh City Council is food inequity, as evidenced in its support for the Food Justice Fund, addressed by more than 20 public commenters, 5 July 2023, at the Standing Committee meeting of this council. Access to food is a first priority survival need. Basketball is not. Problems with FJF. Problem one: Where was Mr. Ganey? Basketballers, Ganey is here. Citizens for Food Equity, Ganey is not here. What is he, anti-citizen? Where was Dr. Miller? I was here. I listened to everyone in person. I am pro-citizen whether I agree or disagree. Problem two: Why use the word apartheid? There is no definition offered of food apartheid. This is divisive. It's a lie. It's anti-unity. Apartheid is from South Africa where it was legal to separate whites from non-whites in institutions and individuals. But there is no Pittsburgh law legalizing Shop 'n Save' and Giant Eagle to sell to whites over non-whites. This is, again, anti-unity, and it's anti-business. Shop 'n Save' and Giant Eagle are businesses. They are in the business of selling food for profit. They'll go where they get the most profit, and they will leave when the theft is present. Problem three: Where were Pittsburghers of Asian and Latin descent? There's nobody among Asians and Latins in Pittsburgh who needs food. No Pittsburgh descendants of pre-Columbian peoples need food, on the one hand, none on the FJF, on the other. One of the commenters via Zoom objected. I agree that there should be. And problem four is how do you operationalize, mathematize the initiative to achieve quantifiable food equity? How many individuals in each one of your districts is starving, low, below 500 calories per day? I don't think you know. Where are they? And how long have they been on this starvation level? Create an X-Y axis, an FGF, starvation in Pittsburgh, X-Y coordinate graph, and show us. Mathematically, show us.
Our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen. Thank you.
Here. Thank you again, Dr. Miller. I honor my husband, who was a true city of Pittsburgh public servant from the 1970s to 2021. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution to the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. Michael J. Mullen reflection. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately describes. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. A first responder, Memorial Green Space, is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Former Mayor Pichpedudo was selected to be a member of a global group of mayors. It is clear that he disgraced himself with initiatives and actions that call into question his loyalty to our city, state, and country. How dare he appoint a board that said the detrimental school building should remain? They did not care about the property value and quality of life issues that harmed the Bon Air community. The Pittsburgh Public School stated that the World Health Organization guidance is the reason they closed their schools for months. The WHO is an unelected, diplomatically immune, tax-exempt group. Eighty-four percent of funding for it is from external commercial sources. The Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation is an example of billions being given to fund their personal agenda. Sweden and Florida are two examples of superiority of business and educational outcomes. They did not shut the schools down at length. StopTheWHO.com. No more global mayors or global Pittsburgh.
Our next registered speaker is Marsha Bandis.
I'm Marsha Bandis, Squirrel Hill, Chairwoman for the Pittsburgh For-Cedaw Coalition. I'm here to request a full-time executive director for the Gender Equity Commission, the GEC. In 2017, when the GEC was established, Anu Palma Jane was hired part-time to lead the commission. She documented her work as required, and over the course of a couple of years, she went from half-time to full-time. The city doesn't do that lightly. The workload required it. Anu didn't just attend GEC meetings and act as a conduit between the commission and the mayor's office. She was an ambassador, reaching out to community organizations, responding to requests to speak, attending local events, and making the GEC's existence known and understood as the mayor's commitment to improving gender equity citywide. She kept the GEC website fresh, published a monthly newsletter, and even did a TED Talk. She answered calls, justified, and advocated for the budget needed to keep the work moving, followed up on actions coming out of the commission. The GEC was becoming known, respected, extremely successful. Each public meeting had guests attending. It was normal to have to bring in extra chairs. During the public comment time, guests would highlight what they were working on, ask for support or guidance, or some would just come to observe. This level of outreach to organizations, foundations, and corporations requires an executive director level. After a year and a half without a dedicated executive director, we have lost all but two community-appointed commissioners. These weren't retired people looking for a way to fill their day. They worked full-time and were there to contribute and offer their experience in equity issues. When the city didn't take advantage of their expertise, they went elsewhere. The gender analysis, as published, was only the quantitative data. It was meant to be the baseline that programs would be measured against. Next steps were to reach out to Black communities and communities unrepresented, which never was fully completed, including Hispanic, Asian, Pacific, and Pacific Islanders, immigrants, Muslims, and others, and work closely with the LGBTQIA+ Commission to validate, prioritize, and seek input on what they believe would make the most difference. Mayor Ganey has said that he plans to direct city departments to consider gender equity and to implement programs accordingly, and I believe he has. That approach will not end citywide systemic discrimination against women. It takes a dedicated effort to identify and address implicit biases in budgets and programs and to work with local organizations, foundations, and corporations to expand gender equity focus beyond what the city can do. The mayor has programs he wants to roll out. A full-time executive director with a thriving gender equity commission can help him be successful. Yes, the gender analysis pointed out the challenges that Pittsburgh has, but by appointing an executive director to lead a newly invigorated gender equity commission will highlight his commitment to citywide gender equity and shine a new light on the city.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Starving at arms. We will not take comments from those in chambers. Is there anybody in chambers wishing to address City Council? If so, please approach the podium and state your name and neighborhood for the record. Ms. Brown?
My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's the top of the hill. I want to say thank you. Thank you to Cookie Coleman, a previous city policeman, who brought attention. It's in the courtyard. It's a picture of Cookie and a picture of Reggie Howes. And there's down here, those streets you made at the bottom of the hill, these new streets, we were having drag racing every night, and the police seemed to be ignoring it. Well, when she called, when she had a press conference, which I didn't make, but you have a picture of her, picture of her and Reggie. And I talked to Reggie, and he was saying the police stepped up. And I want to give you praise and honor to the police because he said they came out in full force. They had left, then people came, they came back. Three roads, they had three cars right there and stopped them. Thank you, police, because we have to listen to that every night. Every night they were drag racing. I also wanted to say, I got papers that I have from years. This paper is in 2013. Dr. Ronald Miller, Center of Global Studies. Harold Brown Browning, my husband, has stated that Ron is saying, what Ron is saying is making sense. We must be able to track the votes, paper ballots. Finally, the League of Women Voters realize that we need more transparency and regular periodic reviews of the voting rolls, and new machines are needed before the next president is elected. Citizens, I protest, we pay thousands of dollars for the penguins and to provide buses to take Mr. Kraus, this drinking, socializing, visiting, and drunk citizens, to their cars. Yet the citizens of Katy, where it was, this is 2013, the citizens in Katy, where it was, must take two buses to get to Mercy Hospital at the bottom of the hill. This councilman Lavelle is not caring, kind, or considerate of the poor elderly citizens who worked a dollar a day in order to make, to build this city. I also saw where here, here's the paper where reminder that people do care. Gun violence Memorial in Homewood honors the life lost. And these shirts that they had, shirts was all lined up. Well, Jim Furlough did this January 2009. This is a shirt I had for my son. It says, I have, some of the words are worn off, but it says, "Justice for Tony." I cried and I cried. Out for justice. It's coming. And it says here, "Do all lives matter?" Anthony Johnson, 7/9/66. On the ninth, he would have been 57, as I said. My time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing none, we'll now move on to the next order of business, which is presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Human Resources. Councilman Burgess.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1723, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning, Article I, Section 902.03, zoning map. By changing from HC, Highway Commercial District, to SP9 Bakery Square District, certain property roughly bounded by Penn Avenue, East Liberty Boulevard, and the Pittsburgh Regional Transit East Busway, all in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System 11th Ward, and by changing from UI, Urban Industrial District, to SP9 Bakery Square District, that certain property roughly bounded by Penn Avenue and the existing easternmost boundary of the SP9 Bakery Square District in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System 12th Ward.
President.
Yes, Councilman Burgess.
I'd like to make a motion to waive Rule 8 so it can appear on tomorrow's agenda. It too will be forwarded, as the companion piece of last week, it too will be forwarded to the Planning Commission for recommendation and review.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1712, resolution further amending Resolution Number 675 of 2008 as amended, entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2009 Capital Budget and Approving the 2009 through 2013 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Brookline Boulevard by $20,268.07 and Increasing Complete Streets by $20,268.07.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1713, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA of Pittsburgh or an URA of Pittsburgh affiliate in Alkastan for the sale of Block 9B, lots 7, 14, 15, 16, 19, 52, 53, 55, 56, 57, and 58, in the 23rd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number One, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1714, resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh or URA of Pittsburgh affiliate to acquire all of the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 5th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 27A, lots 208 and 109, Council District Number Six, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1715, resolution authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority or an Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh affiliate to acquire all of the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 26th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 45M, lots 99, 100, 101, 102, 103, 104, 105, 106, 107, 109, 110, 114, 116, 117, 118, 132, 133, 134, 134A, 137, 138, 139, 140, 141, 142, 143, 145, and 152, Council District Number Six, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1716, resolution amending Resolution 852 of 2019, which authorized a cooperation agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the URA of Pittsburgh to divert 75% of the incremental parking taxes from the garage defined below, up to a maximum of $25 million, to fund general construction costs at the proposed block E development, part of the Greater Lower Hill Development Project in the Lower Hill neighborhood of the City of Pittsburgh by updating the project details in the whereas clauses that have changed since original enactment. Bill Number 1717, resolution authorizing the Urban Redevelopment Authority or an Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh affiliate to acquire all of the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in into the following publicly owned properties in the 13th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 174J, lots 134, 135, 243, 244, 279, 281, 282, 283, 283A, 298, 299, 307, and Block 174N, lots 85 and 86, Council District Number Nine, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1718, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh or an Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh affiliate and University of Pittsburgh of the Commonwealth System of Higher Education or related entity for the sale of Block 29B, lots 306 and 308, in the 4th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Council District Number Three, at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1719, resolution providing for the execution of a cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh for the administration of certain projects and programs and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $750,000, Council District All. And Bill Number 1722, resolution directing the Department of Finance and the Law Department to reduce deed restrictions relative to affordable housing for the publicly owned property in the 8th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block and Lot 0051E, 0016300000, Council District Number Seven.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I may. The last bill, 1722, that the Clerk just read is one little parcel in my district. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to waive Rule 8 so it could appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda.
Okay. Motion to waive or wait. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
I see we're busy. At least in one district. That's good.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1703, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Rising Good Cromer and Miller, LLC, for legal services in connection with a police litigation matter for an amount not to exceed $27,472.90 for the 2023 year. Bill 1704, resolution amending Resolution 726 of 2022, which reappropriated federal American Rescue Plan funding by updating that approved projects as outlined in Exhibit A, Version 5. Bill Number 1705, resolution amending Resolution 411 of 2022, which authorized an amended agreement or agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for the completion of projects approved in the City of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan by decreasing the not-to-exceed amount by $1 million to $71,878,711, and by aligning project lines accordingly. Bill 1706, resolution further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by increasing bridge upgrades by $928,290.01, increasing capital equipment acquisition by $219,833.99, reducing complete streets by $1,500,000, reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $264,124.88, reducing information systems modernization by $35,875.12, and increasing public safety equipment by $651,876. Bill Number 1707, resolution further amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program by increasing capital equipment acquisitions by $569,078.55, reducing complete streets by $774,000, reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $1,566,121, reducing information systems modernization by $183,879, and increasing slope failure remediation by $1,954,921.45. Bill 1708, resolution further amending Resolution Number 723 of 2022, effective December 19, 2022, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2023 Capital Budget, the 2023 Community Development Program, and the 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Program by increasing capital equipment acquisition by $907,063.37, and reducing facility improvements, recreation, and senior centers by $257,063.37. Bill Number 1709, resolution amending Resolution 525 of 2021, which authorized an amended cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories for use by City of Pittsburgh Departments by increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $219,833.99 for a new total of $10,629,313.99. Bill 1710, resolution amending Resolution 43 of 2022, which authorized a 2022 cooperation agreement or agreements with the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the purchase and leasing of vehicles, equipment, and accessories for use by City of Pittsburgh Departments by increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $569,078.55 for a new total of $13,112,081.36. Bill 1711, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Office of Management Budget to commit future 2024 Pago capital funds for the local match of the Department of Transportation's RACE grant in an amount not to exceed $2,274,000. Bill 1724, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, acceptance of gifts to the City, of the City Code, the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to accept a donation from Pittsburgh Arena Real Estate Development LP, Lower Hill Developer, LLC, Parking Partners, 23, Block E, LLC, and/or affiliated entity in the amount of $900,000 to support in the rehabilitation of AM and Recreation Center. And Bill 1725, resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement between Pittsburgh Arena Real Estate Development Lower Hill Developer, LLC, Parking Partners, 23, Block E, LLC, and the City of Pittsburgh for the construction of a public safety facility within a Block E parking structure in the Lower Hill neighborhood of Pittsburgh for the construction of a city rescue station and/or a city paramedic station within a parking structure in fulfillment of the developer's obligation, which was part of the option agreement for redevelopment of the Lower Hill.
Councilman Lavelle.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm offering up a motion to waive Rule 8 on Bill 1704, 1705, 1706, 1707, 1708, 1709, 1710, and 1711, so they can appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bills will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Good job, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services. No new papers for Councilwoman Strasburger. You can't, she's saying it, but her mic's not on. I don't think. Is her mic on? Councilman Lavelle for Councilwoman Strasburger.
Uh, no new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, I see you talking, but we can't hear. I apologize. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Seventeen-Twenty, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Eight-Sixteen of Two Thousand and Fifteen, effective December eighteen, Two Thousand and Fifteen, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Sixteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Sixteen Community Development Block Grant Program and Approving the Two Thousand and Sixteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-One Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements by fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-nine cent, and Increasing Demolition of Condemned Buildings by fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-nine cent.
Thank you, and myself, Chair of Hearings and Policy, I have one appointment. Thank you, Madam President.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number Seventeen-Twenty-One, Resolution Appointing Peter McDevitt as a Board Member of the Equipment Leasing Authority for Term to Expire on June Fifteenth, Two Thousand Twenty-Six. Peter McDevitt will fill the seat previously held by R. Daniel Lavelle.
Yes. Thank you. A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes.
I apologize. Uh, having served on the Equipment Leasing Authority for the number of years, uh, that I have, and having an, a more of an intimate understanding of how that board operates, when I read this this morning, I thought, this is, this is really good news. Peter will be a wonderful addition to the, uh, Equipment Leasing Authority, and I can't think of a better choice to replace our Finance Chair in that seat.
Thank you, and I just want to thank our Finance Chair for his willingness to give up that seat. If he said he wanted to stay on, he was staying on, and, uh, he and Peter seemed to work really well together, so it just seemed like a natural. And we're putting, tasking him with more and more lately, so I think he was okay with giving up one more meeting, so thank you, Councilwoman Lavelle, and thank you, Peter, for your willingness to serve. With that said, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Appointments approved, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. The next order of business is reports to committee for final action, and we'll begin with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number Sixteen-Ninety-nine, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for July Fifth, Two Thousand Twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Sixteen-Sixty-eight, Resolution Transferring the Amount of Ten Thousand Dollars Within the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Operating Budget from City Council Salaries and Wages Regular to Council as a Body for the Purpose of Professional Services.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action, all in favor of passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you, the bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed. Moves us on to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number Seventeen-Hundred, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for July Fifth, Two Thousand Twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Sixteen-Sixty-two, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements in lieu of taking by eminent domain on certain properties necessary for completion of a SLIAD remediation project along Saline Street in the Fifteenth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh. Entering into these temporary construction easements will come at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh of three dollars. Bill Number Sixteen-Sixty-three, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Bridge over Route Fifty-One near Woodruff Street, also referred to as the Parking Lot Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost not to exceed one thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Future resolutions will authorize a project-specific service agreement.
Thank you, heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? I'm just going to add for the Woodruff Street, uh, for the bridge, I just want to say that I did talk to the residents in my district in Mount Washington, especially in Duquesne Heights, part of Banksville, um, and they do have some concerns, they want to make sure that there are traffic officers moving traffic along so that Mount Washington's not so affected, because they also have issues with McGarville Roadway and some other roads that we need some, some work done on too, so they want to make sure that we have police officers, and I did talk to Director Lucas about that, making sure that the traffic is moving, because that's also where our SWAT trucks are, um, along that road, our SWAT, our bomb squad, um, motorcycle officers, you know, special deployment is there, so we want to make sure that there's no traffic backup and that help can get to people when need be. So with that said, I did, I did speak to the director, and I feel confident that she's okay with this. So with that said, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you, the bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Now, Councilwoman Barbara Warwick, present, uh, the Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number Seventeen-O-One, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for July Fifth, Two Thousand Twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Sixteen-Sixty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and any amendment or amendments thereto with Remini Street Eek, Inc., to extend the term of Unifat Software Support and Services for J D Edwards, Oracle Technologies, and Oracle Database at a cost not to exceed five hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars over four years and five months.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final passage, all in favor of, the, the final action, all in favor of passage, vote aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you, the bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes, are, is finally passed, and that moves us on to our last committee of the day. Councilwoman Deborah Gross present the Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Seventeen-O-two, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for July Fifth, Two Thousand Twenty-three, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Sixteen-Twelve, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter Into a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority for the City to Provide Annual Contributions of up to two million, five hundred thousand dollars to Support a Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Issuance for Affordable Housing at a Sum Not to Exceed sixty-two million, five hundred thousand dollars over twenty-five years.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing, uh, Councilwoman Kraus?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Um, I, I will keep my, my remarks brief. I, uh, first would like to recognize the work of, uh, of everyone, uh, our members, my colleagues, uh, our Budget Office, uh, the Administration, and the U R A for extensive discussion, uh, and a willingness to answer all the questions that members had, uh, around this appropriation, and also, uh, the willingness to entertain, uh, a series of amendments that were crafted from Councilwoman Gross, and I think through our Finance Chair, uh, Councilman Lavelle, uh, and I especially want to recognize, um, Deputy Mayor Pollock, uh, he has been, uh, very, uh, attentive to, uh, to concerns that I had, and we had multiple conversations, uh, around, uh, garnering my support for the passage of this bill, uh, and, uh, I, I know how incredibly busy he is, and the kinds of things he must have on his plate at any given point in time, but he always made time to, uh, to take, uh, the call and have the conversation with me to, uh, assuage, uh, any concerns that I might have, so I am voting in the affirmative today. Uh, I would, uh, be disingenuous to say that I don't still have some concerns or reservations, but I am going to proceed, uh, with the, uh, with a positive recommendation, and again, want to just recognize the work of everyone, uh, over the past, I guess, three or four weeks even now to bring this bill to fruition, so thank you for our long comments, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further comments? Councilman Coghill?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam President. Um, I first want to say my, I can't support this today for, for multiple reasons, but I want to make clear, it's no reflection on the U R A, it's no reflection on affordable housing, um, it's simply looking at it from a business point of view. You know, we are committing to sixty-two and a half million dollars, giving the U R A the right to take out a loan, and committing to pay it back over twenty-five years, but we don't know if that principal amount is going to be twenty-five million or forty million, and we don't have a say-so in that, and that really is the problem for me. If the U R A were to accept a loan that is for twenty-five million dollars, and we were paying sixty-two and a half million dollars on it, well, that would be a tragedy to me. So the fact that it's taken out of our hands, and the fact that the dispersment of this money, once we do secure it, is also out of our hands, is why I can't support it today, so, thank.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything from any other members? I'm just going to thank all of council for working so hard on this, and I want to be, all of us have some little bit of apprehension, and, and we would be, not be totally honest with the public, we didn't say that, we had some apprehension about it, mostly it's about voting for something we're not seeing yet, and I just want to say, I think that I also have a bigger apprehension, is what I said, somebody, my, my, I'm more nervous about the idea of if we don't do this, that it could have the negative impact on people that are looking for some affordable housing in the City of Pittsburgh, and all of our neighborhoods are seeing escalating cost in housing across our area, we just built a, I think it was forty-four, forty-six units in Ferrywood, they're building, they're not even built yet, and already the waiting list is tremendous, so that's for senior citizens only, so I can't imagine what it's, what it is like citywide, and I, I know now I'm trying to help people, I think every one of us get calls in our office trying to help people that are looking for housing, um, and, and terr, I mean terrified that they're going to be out on the street, and we, a lot of us know people who have lost their homes, and we do try to work through all that, so it was the fear of what is known, not the fear of what was unknown to, for me, that made me decide that I was going to vote for this. So with that said, the bill's now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called, and I do want to thank all the council members, I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for putting amendments forward, I want to thank Councilman Lavelle, who worked July Fourth until about eleven-thirty at night, sending stuff back and forth, trying to get some amendments together too, and making sure that we were all agreeable, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to thank Jake Pollock for coming to our, my office to meet with everyone to try to get to a better place, but individually, I want to thank Councilwoman Warwick also for coming into the meeting, but I want to individually thank all the members, because at some point throughout this process, everyone has been part of the discussion and part of the solutions, so thank you all for, for everything, and Councilman Coghill, I want to thank you for holding us accountable, making sure that you shared your concerns, and, um, and hopefully we'll do better with the, with the next one, so.
Thank you.
That, that makes you have a better comfort level when you're able to vote for it, because I know how much you care about affordable housing.
Madam President, if I may, I do have one question. We keep referring it to as amendments, are these amendments, or are these suggestions?
They're amendments. We amended the bill. We amended the bill with suggestions, how's that, how's that sound?
Good enough, thank you.
So with that said, the bills are now ready for final action, all in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no, the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
No.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger. Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, one no.
Thank you, the bills haven't received, the, the bill haven't received the legally required number of votes, is finally passed, and that moves us on to our motions and resolutions, I have a few meeting announcements, on Wednesday, July twelfth, beginning at nine-thirty A M, council will hold a pre-agenda interview for the Planning Commission with the Standing Committee's meeting to immediately follow at ten A M. To register to speak at the Standing Committee's meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage, or call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. Speaker registration will close at nine A M Wednesday morning. I also want to mention that we have, I've talked with Madam Clerk, she's going to put forward the, um, appointment for Carisha Kubiak, uh, to the P W S A, so council can vote up or down that appointment, we'll have a chance to interview, she's scheduling the, an interview first, so we can ask those questions, uh, publicly, um, and we are, I'm waiting for an opinion from the Law Department for another appointment, and as soon as we're done with those, uh, we'll, we'll have further discussion with everyone about it. Um, Councilwoman Warwick, sorry.
Yes, thank you, um, I just wanted to say, uh, so I, I just wanted to note that, um, the past three Fridays, um, there have been shootings in Hazelwood, uh, one on Flowers, then in Glen Hazel, and, um, just this past Friday, below the tracks, uh, in that one, a fourteen-year-old was shot in the legs, um, uh, apart from that injury, miraculously, no one else was injured. But I, I, you know, I do want to say that I, um, I think it's important to acknowledge, um, for the residents there, that this is not okay, that it's very frightening, that this is not normal, and it should never feel normal. And I spoke with Chief, uh, Chief of Staff Wheatley, and, uh, he is going to work with the mayor's office for response, which I greatly appreciate. Um, sorry. At any rate, um, for, for years, these incidences in Hazelwood have just been nothing more than a blip on the news, and that is not okay, so we're hoping to, at the very least, change that, uh, just to let the community know that we do care, and I very much appreciate, um, the mayor's and, and Chief of Staff Wheatley's willingness to work together on that, and, um, I also want to say that, you know, in a district where we've seen one of the worst incidents of mass gun violence, you, you know, the Tree of Life shooting, w- w- we need to start focusing as well on, on these incidences that are literally happening every weekend, um, so anyway, that's all from me, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman, any further comments from any members? Councilman Kraus?
Uh, thank you, Madam President, just, uh, two things I probably should have put in my remarks that I've forgotten, and I'm going to put them in now, uh, the, I think one of the reasons that members struggled with, uh, the last bill on the agenda was our duty as fiscal agents of the city, and wanting to be, it's not the spirit, I've said that so many times, I want to reinforce that, not the spirit of the bill, it's the, uh, the, the concern, and thank God, we do have concern as fiscal fiduciary agents of the city, that the decisions that we're making here are sound and responsible, uh, and, uh, borrowing money at this time is, it's not like an easy thing to do right now by any means, uh, and so I do appreciate that, that members struggled, we, we, we all did, uh, and in that same vein, I meant to say when I talked about Peter, that he will be the, a voice of fiscal responsibility on the, um, Equipment Leasing Authority, it is one of the largest expenditures that we make every year in purchasing a fleet of vehicles, not just for a specific department, but for the city as a whole, and every department has allocations for, for vehicles that, that are needed, and everyone jockeys for, please make sure I have what I need to do the task you asked me to do, and so the, the reason I'm so encouraged about hearing that Peter will take on the responsibility of the Equipment Leasing Authority, that I, I know through my personal experience with him, that he'll be a voice of fiscal responsibility in that discussion, and, uh, and, um, that's most welcomed, so, thank you, Madam President, appreciate it.
Councilman Coghill, and then Councilman Burgess.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, I want to welcome Peter aboard, he attended our first meeting, um, you know, I think he, I echo your thoughts, Councilman Kraus, I think he'll be good for the board, um, yeah, and I also want to thank the administration for finding funds to at least purchase a few vehicles to stop the bleeding, uh, you know, it's almost like a piece of bubble gum in the dam right now, but at the same time. You know, it's almost like a piece of bubble gum in the dam right now, but at the same time, you know, they made the effort, and I applaud that effort. Typically, and I don't know if Peter was there last, if we went over this last meeting, but it's a city of our size and our public safety and our public works departments. It should be twenty-four million dollars a year to keep the fleet up and running, steady, and where we don't have to worry about them breaking down. We approved six million last year. The authority asked for twenty-four. We approved six. So, there's a long way to go. This effort will go a long way, I hope, at least to order us a new fire truck that we so desperately need. And again, welcome aboard, Peter, and we'll miss you there, Mr. Lavelle. Okay, thanks.
Councilman Burgess.
Somewhere around two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, I don't remember, we began to talk about a city for all. And when we first start talking about it, you know, we were a voice crying in the wilderness. Over time, Mayor Pedudo, then Dan Gilman, and then Mayor Ganey all adopted the slogan that we began to talk about first. And they say imitation is the best form of flattery. And so, I, as now, as I look at our work, and we see many of the things we've articulated for decades finally coming to fruition. We're proud of that. Councilman Lavelle and I began to talk about affordable housing bond. Dan, we started talking about that six years ago, seven years ago, eight years ago. I can't remember.
About a year after we did the Housing Opportunity Fund.
That's how long? Yeah, we've been for six years kind of quietly behind the scenes. And so, certainly, we're proud that the Administration is following our lead and implementing the ideas that we have put forward. That's great. But I was, I've had some visitors, you know, I was driving through our city, and it brought me back to, you know, and we're going to do something great with Bakery Square, which will complement Homewood, Lomer, Leamington. The thing that I want to remind you of, and I may not be here to remind you, is that we are a city of all. It is not, and I reject segregation of any form. I thousand percent reject building affordable housing in concentrated areas, being, building all affordable housing anywhere. I reject that a thousand percent, that segregation, and that will just damn the children to a life of poverty and violence and crime. And I would never, I would never support it, and anyone who does is Neanderthal in their thinking. But what I want to say to our city and to all of us here, we are not against each other, although sometimes even on council, we're ever serial. And I think that Councilman Kraus has taught me that. I mean, he says that, I think, well. Our goal is to provide everybody with clean, decent housing that they can afford, everybody. Our goal is to create every neighborhood to be mixed-income and stable and have resources and amenities. And so, for those of us, I, who advocate for poor communities, because, you know, I represent the largest poor communities, largest swath of poor communities in the city, even though I advocate for Homewood and Lincoln, Leamington, and Lomer, and Lomer is on its way up, it should never be in opposition to Shady Side. And I made that mistake sometimes in my past. My language was that of adversarial, right? Because I was so, you know, I'm dealing with homicides daily, weekly. I'm dealing with, you know, third-world country situations, and in my passion to rebuild these communities in my earlier council, today's, you know, when I saw Shady Side, Scroll Hill, South Side Flats, I was envious of what they had, right? And what's going on in the Strip District and the rapid development. I was envious. And so, my messaging was to pit communities against each other. Now, in the twilight of my career, you know, I don't see it that way, right? It's really of being complimentary. It's how can we bring the public, private side, and the community side, those three-legged stools, together to rebuild communities? Last but not least, and I say that out of pride, but people ask, it's funny, now that, you know, I'm probably retiring from public life, people keep asking me about my legacy, you know? It's been funny. I get in grocery stores. I get it all the time. And I laugh, because my legacy, I've been the pastor of a church for forty years. I've been a professor for thirty-two years at one college. I've only done council for sixteen years. But none of them are my legacy, and I laugh, because it's not my legacy. I believe my legacy is my family. I am most proud of my children. My legacy is my children. And I will then use this selfless plug, that over the Friday and Saturday, my son and his bride, his new wife, both earned their PhDs. And so, and they are both now assistant professors at the University of Pittsburgh. And so, I am both tenure-track professors. So, I am extremely proud. My legacy, Dr. Alvarez and Dr. Burgess, my daughter-in-law and my son. That's my, my legacy is my children and their success. And hopefully, they're continuing this work to be servants, to give back to the community and to be a blessing to other people. If they do that, that will be my legacy, not little thing I've done. And so, that's it. I am, this council did a good thing today. It took us eight years to do it. It's a great thing. And I expect greater things from this council moving forward. Thank you for this moment for the old guy.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess. Anything else from members? I'm just going to say a couple of things. First, congratulations on your sons. They are amazing. I know your sons helped my son, so thank you very much. And Councilman Coghill, thank you for advocating for the vehicles for so long and for working with the Administration to make sure that those happen. And thank you, Councilman Burgess and Lavelle, for your leadership over the years about affordable housing. And thank you to the Mayor's Office for bringing it to fruition. So, is that good for everybody? But I do want to say, Councilwoman Warwick, I think all of us are feeling the pain of what's happening in terms of violence in the City of Pittsburgh, and I think we all see different solutions in different ways. I actually think, at this point, we need to worry about what we're doing with our policing in the City of Pittsburgh. I think we need our numbers up. I think we need to make sure that we're empowering our officers to do their jobs. But I also think we need to have our social workers out in a way that's different than what we think. I don't know that they should be going on calls. I think they should be doing more preventive stuff in the first place, and maybe partnering with schools, with social workers and others, to get more of them out on the streets, because no one person, is what I want to say, can do this alone. Not a council member, not a mayor, and I know the mayor's taking a lot of heat over it. If the mayor could stop violence tomorrow, why would he not want to? I don't think that's the answer. I think that he wants to stop it. He's one person. It's going to take us as a city, working together, to do what we need to do to address these issues and different, and look at things and be open to looking at things in different ways, so that kids are not being shot on the street, so parents aren't worrying about their kids walking down the street or going to school or going home. So, schools aren't getting in lockdown and putting kids in traumatic situations, you know, constantly. And so, I think in overall, we need to have a real conversation with our mayor, with other people, including DHS and others, to figure out what we can do a little bit differently, but to make sure that we're getting services and mental health treatment to people that really need it. And I want to thank Ricky Moody on our side of the hall, who has been really amazing, getting things out to the public on our side of the hall. So, I want to thank him for his work, and know that we're eager to work with the Office of Community Health and Safety and the things that they have planned for the City of Pittsburgh. I know that the Mayor's Office is trying. I know other mayors have tried. It's just the climate and the environment we're living in now, and the people are just so filled with hate, anger, drug problems, mental health issues, and the list goes on and on and on, and it's where do you attack first to try to put in, at least, try to stall it a little bit or calm it down a little bit across the city and give people some hope. And I think that's more than anything is what we want to do, want to give people hope that we're all working on this together and we're putting them first, not our politics. I think that's what they care about. Anything else from members? That's it. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting? There's nobody absent.
So, move.
Second. Meeting adjourned.